Diana, are you ready when that reaches time?
Yes, I am.
Are you ready to start?
Yes, we are.
Just before I call a meeting, do you do a roll call attendance? Or do we need to do anything for your records with that?
Yes, actually, you'll do the, you can do the roll call when you call the meeting to order, and then announce a quorum present, or if you want me to do it, I can, whatever you prefer.
Okay. Good evening, I'd like to call to order the City of Hasslet's Capital Improvement Advisory Committee meeting. The date is Tuesday, May 26th, the year is 2020, and the time is 6:30 PM. We're doing this meeting via teleconference, so we will do a roll call attendance to identify who is on the call. I will identify myself, Gregory Caddish, Chairman of P&amp;Z. If you would please announce your name.
Peter Hall.
Jim Markerson.
And not in attendance, so we have Greg, Dennis, Jim, and Peter in attendance. Not in attendance is Brian and Dorian this evening. So we do have a quorum present with four members in attendance. We'll begin with our first second agenda item, or we'll continue with our second agenda item, which is to consider for approval the December 16, 2019 CIAC meeting minutes. Which were included in our packet. Is there any discussion or comments about the minutes? If not, we could call for a motion. Well, I'll make a motion that we approve the December 16, 2019 Capital Improvement Advisory Committee meeting minutes as written. Is there a second?
I'm sorry.
Jim, I'll second it.
Who was the motion by, please?
Gregory Caddish, sorry.
Okay, thank you.
And who seconded?
This is Jim.
Yeah.
Jim seconded, so we'll do a roll call vote. Peter?
I'm going to abstain, I was absent.
Staying, Jim?
Approve.
Dennis?
Yes.
Greg is aye. No opposed. So the motion passes. Moving on, we're going to consider an act regarding the recommendation City Council for the approval of the fiscal year 2019-2020 biannual report. And we'll begin with a staff presentation.
All right, good evenings, CIAC members. The supporting documents that have been included with this report reflect that we are coming through the year with some pretty good growth, as we did last year. Projected to be a little bit lower than what was anticipated. There are a couple of projects that are coming up, larger projects that should make that a little bit better. As far as the water growth, looks like to be about half as much as last year. As far as the sewer growth, we are over the current year-to-date, or current expected growth, but still coming in about half of what was last year. The fund balances are healthy. There's no projects planned out of them right now, but that will soon change once those fund balances can fully support a project. I will report that we have, council has approved a new wastewater master plan to be done, and that was approved at the last council meeting. So we will be getting a new projection and new projects that will come from that to add to our list. But as far as growth in the water and sewer funds, it's healthy, which is a great change from times past when I've given you this report. And with that, staff recommends approving this to council. And I'll be available for any questions.
Diana, can you confirm, can you hear my audio?
Yes, I can.
Okay, it shows on the computer like it's got disconnected, but I just want to make sure it's still there.
Yeah, you sound really good.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions for city staff regarding the information shared in the report? Travis, are there any projects on the list that you would say are high priority or highest priority, or that enable other things to happen that are priorities for the city?
There, once the La Terra subdivision kicks off in full force, there's probably a couple higher level projects, such as replacing the pumps at the pump station, redoing the pressure-reducing valves, just servicing those. It's not anything that's going to break the system, but it does age the system quicker. So there's, I have, these projects were listed in the master water plan, or master, excuse me, master water plan, in order of what the consultant thought was the importance. But between me and the Public Works Director, we have a different kind of running list of what needs to be done first. So that's, again, nothing that's going to break the system, but definitely something that will improve the reliability of it.
Thank you. Any other questions? It's not, is there a motion?
This is Peter Hall. I move we recommend approval of the report and recommendation letter to City Council.
There's been a motion voted by Peter, is there a second?
I'll second it, Dennis, you're one.
Dennis has seconded, to a roll call vote. Peter?
Aye.
Jim? Jim, are you still there?
Yeah, aye, I'm sorry, I had it on mute.
Fine, Dennis?
Aye.
Greg Caddish, aye. Motion passes, thank you. Go back to our agenda. So our next meeting is going to be November 30th at 6:30 PM, is that correct?
Yes, that's what is planned on the calendar for right now, yes, sir.
Okay. And anybody have any questions about that, or concerns about that date that you're aware of at this time? Okay, if there's no further comments, then we'll adjourn the CIAC, the time is 6:37 PM.
This is Diana, we can stay on the line and just wait until 6:45, and we'll call P&amp;Z in session. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, I could, I did, I could not understand that.
Mr. Hillborne, are you on the line?
Does anybody understand then?
Yes.
So are you, are you in support of the, the motion as it was stated, or did you hear it?
Yes, I did, and I am in support.
Okay, so the motion passes for, for, for one abstention. Moving on, we'll go to the agenda item four, which is public hearings and action items. We'll begin with four A. Hold a public hearing, discuss, consider, and act on a request for an amendment to the specific use permit, S-0304-08 Perryman 4H and S-0303-08 Perryman 5H for access to gas wells on approximately 101.865 acres of land in the E. Hopkins survey abstract number 646 in the city of Hasslet, Tarrant County, Texas, and located on the south side of Paskey Way, between Blue Mound Road and Paskey Way. The subject property is in the Residential Plan Development RPZ zoning district. We'll begin with our staff presentation.
All right, good evening, commissioners. Travis Nafnazi, O City Engineer. Gas Wells falls underneath my purview in the city. This is a request from Devon Energy to change the way that they access their sites. So the city of Hasslet ordinances requiring an SUP. Part of that SUP requires that they submit a traffic routing plan that shows access to the well site. These two well sites are located within the Caraway subdivision. Currently, they are accessed from Blue Mound Road and kind of up right on the top of the hill, which is difficult at times for the trucks to get in and get out without obstructing traffic. So their request has come to me that they want to access their well sites from Paskey Way, which is on the north end of the Caraway subdivision. If they get this changed to their SUP, it will be removing that accessible from Blue Mound Road, thereby taking away that, that potential traffic obstruction. Section 4.05.015 requires that roadways providing access to wells or pipelines must be in all-weather design. The sites would be accessed via the existing lease road, which is constructed of a crushed road base, which satisfies the requirements of this section. In section 3.16, the ingress and egress of the industrial driveways, which a gas well is considered an industrial driveway, should have a 15-foot one-way or 25-foot two-way traffic. This access point on the pass drive would technically be required to be a concrete drive, but this drive is in the future right-of-way of intermodal Parkway. So staff does not recommend requiring a concrete drive just to be torn up in the future as intermodal is extended to the south. Finally, the list of review and approval criteria for a specific use permit. Plan development regulations meets the property requirements as there is plenty of setback from the wells. They're not changing any of the wells, just how they access them. Harmon Road and Paskey Drive are collector-level streets and are suitable for truck traffic. And because there's no additional wells going in or any type of additional wells being drilled, there should be no impacts on traffic. So staff recommends approval to the SUP amendment for the two wells to allow access from Paskey Drive via the Crush Rock Access Road that is currently in place and to abandon access from Blue Mound Road. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Is the applicant present? If the applicant is not present, so at this time we'll call for a public input and open the public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak for or against? Hey, recognizing that nobody spoke to speak for or against, we'll close the public hearing and open it up for discussion. So are there any questions for city staff?
I, I had a, I was curious for the question. This is Paul Wallach. I guess I'm an alternate. I can talk though, right?
Yes, of course.
Okay, just want to make sure. February 18th letter, it says Devon will discontinue the use of the lease road from Blue Mound up to well, 4H well site. Then Caraway will con, has conveyed the property to the city of Hasslet. That's, that's that lease right-of-way? They conveyed, or what did they convey, Travis?
Yes, they conveyed half of the right-of-way for the future intermodal Parkway. So that lease road actually sits now on city right-of-way, so they would, they would abandon that through, through the Caraway development from Blue Mound Road.
So the intermodal right-of-way would extend down to Blue Mound Road?
Yes, part of the master thoroughfare plan shows that road extending as a four-lane divided street down to Blue Mound Road.
Very good, thank you.
Travis, this is Greg Caddish. So Paskey Drive, that, that would sit between the commercial property on the north end of the Caraway development, is that correct?
That's correct. That's a collector-level street between the two residential and PD commercial areas.
Are there any other questions for city staff? Is there a motion?
This is Peter Hall. I'll make a motion. I move we recommend approval of amendments to the following SUPs. Perryman 4HSUP, S-0304-08 and Perryman 5HSUP, S-0303-08 to allow access to the gas well sites from Paskey Drive via the Crush Rock Access Road and to abandon access from Blue Mound Road.
There's a motion made by Peter. Is there a second?
Brian Flaxburg, I'll second.
Second by Brian. Do a roll call vote. And Diana, could you please clarify, is Paul, should Paul vote or not vote?
Well, we, we encourage everyone to participate. We encourage the alternates to participate, but the official vote, depending on how many regular members are present, will, it will show the regular members how they voted and the alternates how they voted. So if-
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so we'll do a roll call vote. Brian.
Aye.
Dennis.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
Peter.
Aye.
Paul.
Yes.
Greg is an aye. Motion passes unanimous. Moving on, agenda item 4B. Hold a public hearing, discuss, consider, and act on a request for approval of an amendment to the building design for a commercial building to be located on lot 2, block 1, Letera Village. The subject property consists of 0.61 acres. It's in the commercial local retail transition plan development and is located on the south side of Avondale Hasslet Road approximately 500 feet west of FM 156. And we'll begin with our staff presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Walt. As you just read, this is a request for an amendment to the building design. The building that was to be located on lot 2B, block 1, Letera Village subdivision. In your backup, you have both the elevations of the proposed building and the elevations of the, the approved elevations of the building from, I want to say 2015, actually. Due to what happened in the legislature in the last legislative session, the city has no control over the materials to be used on the building anymore. The proposed building does meet all the other city design requirements. It is obviously not same as the, same design as the approved design, but my understanding from the applicant that that's to accommodate a potential user who typically uses this kind of design for their use. That being said, as it otherwise meets all the requirements of the Hasslet, staff recommends approval of the amendment.
Is the applicant present this evening?
Mr. Chairman, yes, I am. This is Al Burton.
Could you state your name and address, Mr. Burton, please?
Certainly. It's Al Burton. The address is 303 Cactus Drive, Hasslet.
Is there anything else you would like to share with the members of the Planning and Zoning Commission this evening?
Mr. Reeves was right on exactly. The reason for the change is the tenant is desiring this type of building structure. This is their, kind of their retail look. They did not like the previous design and they have a desire to have this design where it's a straight facade facing the road. So this is the purpose of the request.
Any additional information you want to share at this time?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Present. Any questions?
Yep, so at this time we'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak for or against agenda item 4B? Hey, recognizing that no one spoke up, we'll close the public hearing and we'll open it up for discussion. Is there any questions for the city staff or the applicant? Just have a question, and I don't know if it's even material at this point, but did the square footage of the floor plan change with the elevation changes, or is that not to be determined at this point?
Uh, Mr. Chairman. Go ahead, Al.
No, the, the square footage did not significantly change. Mr. Reeves may have the exact square footage. I'm, I'm sorry I don't have that in front of me, but it sits on the same site plan. It's the same dimensions, so it should be pretty close to the square footage that was originally approved.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, this is Walt. This building has the same footprint as the previously approved building, so it's not bigger square footage-wise than the other building. And in fact, as I recall, I think the other building actually had some outdoor seating area on it on one of the sides. And it doesn't have that anymore, so it's good in that regard.
Are there any other questions for city staff or the applicant? If not, is there a motion?
This is Peter Hall. I've moved, we recommend approval of amendment to the building design for the proposed commercial building to be located on block 2B, on lot 2B, block 1, Letera Village.
Is there a motion to recommend approval? Is there a second?
I second it. Dennis?
Dennis is seconded. We'll do a roll call vote. Peter?
Aye.
Dennis?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
And Greg is an aye as well. The motion passes unanimous. Thank you. Moving on, agenda item 4C. Hold a public hearing, discuss, consider, and act on a request for approval of an amendment to the landscaping plan for a daycare located on lot 1, block 1, Hasslet Elite Learning Center addition. The subject property consists of 2.855 acres. It's in the NC or Neighborhood Commercial zoning district and is located on the western side of FM 156, approximately 600 feet south of Berry Drive. And we'll begin with our staff presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Walt. As you read, this is a request for an amendment to the approved landscaping plan for this site. I'm just going to cut straight to the chase here. The, the applicant is proposing on the southern side of the property to install an eight-foot-tall board fence with seven crape myrtle trees as a substitute for four required canopy trees that were required on the southern property line and a 10-foot landscaping strip. Or maybe as a 15-foot landscaping strip. Staff has no problem with the eight-foot fence. It's going to require engineered plans to get a permit for it. But beyond that, we don't have any issue with the fence. The code does allow for the substitution of ornamental or understory trees for the required canopy trees at a three-to-one substitution ratio, which in this case would require 12 ornamental trees and not the seven that the applicant has put on his plan. It's five trees short there. On the FM 156 side, as you recall from the already approved landscaping plan, that plan identified a tree line along the FM 156 frontage, but that landscaping plan also put in the required trees that the code stipulates for new construction in the city of Hasslet. The applicant is proposing to remove all those required trees and substitute the existing tree line that's along FM 156. As part of the applicant's submittal materials, he has identified the trees along there and four of those trees would qualify as meeting the requirements on the city's approved plant list. The rest of the trees are all hackberries. Just some brief history here on this. I started working for the city of Hasslet in November of 2014. At the time I started with the city of Hasslet, the city of Hasslet's landscaping requirements did not recognize hackberry trees as being an accepted tree for required landscaping and new construction. And the city's tree preservation ordinance doesn't recognize any size of hackberry tree as being a protected tree. So before I got here, the city had already decided that it didn't want hackberry trees to be used as required landscaping or to be substituted for required landscaping or to actually preserve hackberry trees as a tree in the city of Hasslet. I certainly give the applicant plenty of credit for cleaning up that tree line and cleaning up those trees along there. But even if we accept that there's four trees out there that meet the minimum that are actually on the city's approved plant list, that still leaves it six trees short. And the idea here is to substitute that existing tree line, the hackberries, for the remainder of those trees that aren't being provided. Staff can't support that basically for the reasons I just mentioned. Those trees are not trees that the city of Hasslet has decided that it wants to have as landscaping for new construction. On the northern property line, I can only say that's a bit of a mess. Based on the applicant's submittal materials, the applicant obviously thinks all those trees are on, on the property. The staff doesn't agree. And you have an existing landscaping plan signed and sealed by a registered landscape architect that doesn't identify any of those trees as being on the applicant's property. So in effect, what we have here is an attempt to substitute an existing tree line that may or may not be on the applicant's property with trees that may or may not be on the applicant's property with some trees that may meet the city's landscaping requirement. But we don't know exactly which ones those are, whether or not they're actually on the property. The approved landscaping plan has nine trees along that property line. You'll note in the staff report that I explained that if this, if somebody were actually turning in a plan for this property today, as opposed to when this plan was approved in 2019, there'd be a different landscaping requirement on this particular property line. Subsequent to the approval of the landscaping plan on this property, a project was what Belgrade, the Belgrade Estates project was one run through which subdivided the property and re-zoned a one-acre lot that directly abuts this property to the Neighborhood Commercial zoning district. The landscaping requirement for abutting commercial properties in this case is 17 understory or canopy trees and 17 shrubs along the approximately 245 feet of that neighborhood commercial zone lot in the Belgrade Estates project, which would leave an approximate 41 feet that still abuts our two-zone property, which would require one canopy tree. So in essence, you have an approved landscaping plan that has nine canopy trees, which could be changed to one canopy tree and 17 understory trees and 17 shrubs. But in this proposal, it's to substitute a tree line that may or may not be on the property with trees that don't meet the minimum, the trees on the approved land, on the approved plant list as a substitute for the approved lands, for the required and the approved landscaping. Having said all that, as you'll note in your staff report, staff recommends approval with four conditions. The first is that 12 crape myrtles, instead of the proposed seven, be installed along the southern property line and leave the four canopy trees being removed by the installation of the board fence. Condition number two is that six canopy trees from the city's plant list be installed along the FM 156 frontage. Three is that the nine canopy trees from the city's plant list that are on the approved landscaping plan be installed along the northern property line. And because this is Walt, this was all allowed to be submitted without having been prepared or stamped and sealed by a registered landscape architect, you really need to, to include as a condition of approval that the requirement of section 5.2.2C1, that the landscape plan be prepared by a registered landscape architect be waived. I'm finished.
Thank you, Mr. Reeves. Is the applicant present?
I am, sir. This is Greg Harrison.
And do you have any additional information you would like to share with the members of the Planning and Zoning Commission?
I do. Uh, thank you.
Again, state your name and your address if you would.
Yes, my name is Greg Harrison, 1836 Fairway Bend, Hasslet, 76052.
Okay, any additional information you would like to share?
Yes, sir, I would. That tree line has got trees. There's 33 trees down that tree line. And if you'll notice down at the end where that car is passing, that is one of the entrances to the meadows. I did, and some of the other pictures you'll see, take some pictures that I did not at this point until now, I guess basically say that those were mine. Those particular trees where that car is at are also hackberry trees. There are a number of hackberry trees that go down the meadow's property line as well. I have spoken with the neighbors directly south of the center and have told them that I was going to have to put in additional trees or put in trees that were three-inch caliper or less or more. And that was to suffice the city's recommendation. And they asked what I was going to do with these trees. I said, "Well, what would you like for me to do with them?" The city doesn't think that those are on the approved list. And they said, "Well, we certainly don't want you to take them down because that is a huge buffer." As a matter of fact, two of the neighbors jasoned to the property, said, "We wish you hadn't have cut them because it deadens a lot of the sound previous to now with them being canopied up like they are." So I think that tree line fits the rest of Hasslet. It certainly fit the meadows, which is a very high-end neighborhood. And I suggest, my proposal is, is to leave those trees as they are, groomed and manicured. That tree right there that you just looked at, if you'll back up, that is a hackberry tree and that is on the meadow's property side. So as you can see, these three, these trees have thrived. They've, they have had no water other than what Mother Nature provided. Therefore, I feel like that those trees should suffice for that side of the property. As far as the north side of the property, I've spoken with the property owner, Mr. LaFang, and he has no intentions of removing those trees, some of which are over 24 inches in diameter. Now whether or not, according to the surveyors, that property line is actually where the fence is, is actually, according to them, five inches inside of the property line, meaning that some of those trees that are on the north side of the barbed wire fence, those trees actually are on my property line. I went as so far to get the mayor to come out. He spent about two and a half hours with me on a Sunday walking the property and looking at it. And he too didn't understand why that those trees wouldn't suffice. Having said that, moving to the south side of the building where the fence is proposed, you'll see that I've put up a couple of pictures, which unfortunately I'm not a, an architect nor a drawing specialist. But you will be able to see that the big concern when we initially proposed this project from the neighbors were that they would be able to see into the daycare and thus for the daycare would see into their backyards. When I talked to them about the fence and about the trees that were proposed back there, they all agreed and would much rather, much rather see some faster-growing shrubs be put in instead of the trees. The shrubs are quite a bit more expensive than the, than the four trees that we're trying to replace. The reason that we wanted that was, as we told them in the beginning, was to be a good neighbor and to try to fulfill some of their wants and desires, and that was privacy. And I can certainly understand that. The one couple that was the big opponent of this project were actually the ones now that actually are warning us. There's that picture right there, if you will see. That is a view of what we see out the window as it states right now. And as you can see, the fence, it is somewhat deteriorated. So that's what I look at when I look that way. The other picture, that one, you'll see there's a metal pole that I had put up temporarily by the fence company, who by the way is the one that wrote your landscaping fence policy. Anyway, that's what it would look like, the view, if we put the fence up. Also, one of the other issues for putting the fence up is the fact that there are transformers back there that have to be serviced periodically. And both of the homeowners that those transformers are in were actually going to have to put gates in. The fence, if you'll back up just one, if you may, thank you. That is the proposed fence. That is in North Blend. And as you can see, that section of fence is extremely nicer than anything that is currently adjacent to my property. That one tree represented about 30 feet. That's the shielding that they're going to get with the original plan. One tree and that link to space. I'm trying to put in seven crape myrtles, which will grow immensely faster and would supply them and us with needed security as far as being able to see in and back and forth. and would supply them and us with needed security as far as being able to see in and back and forth. So I don't think twelve, uh, is satisfactory. I mean, I could put the four back in and if it were a, a cost issue, which it's not, uh, you know, I could save a bunch of money. There's almost forty thousand dollars worth of fence that's going in back there to shield and to make a buffer for the neighbors as well. Uh, that again, wasn't even an original plan. And I'm willing to spend that much money so that the center looks good and it also is a buffer. The west side, I understand completely. Uh, they're, you know, I'm putting in a business next to uh, their property. So again, uh, I'm going to put in the trees. I have no problem with that. I, you know, that's what was on the plan. Uh, my biggest, my biggest concern is the one fifty-six and the north side. Uh, I feel very comfortable that the trees that are there and have survived for many, many, many years, just as the trees down one fifty-six have survived, is a whole lot better off for everybody and neighbors. I mean, I asked them what, like I said, do you think that north side has any bearing on the noise? And without doubt, they all agree that it probably did. So my recommendation is what I put into the, to the plan, the proposed plan is to, uh, you know, leave those trees there. Otherwise, I might as well just doze them all down on the one fifty-six and put up, you know, just a few trees that are currently, you know, on the plan. I mean, that, that's crazy. It doesn't even make sense. Unfortunately, I'm not a public speaker, so you'll have to, uh, forgive me for not speaking, uh, as I probably should, but mine is of common sense. It is of common sense. There's a huge tree row down through there that absolutely is as nice looking as anything down through there right now. And I own the approved tree list. Of all trees, there's a mesquite tree. I, I can't believe anybody would even want a mesquite tree with thorns and everything else. These hackberries are all along one fifty-six, all the way down. I've taken pictures, which I, I did not send Diane. Uh, all the way down, there's hardly a section of property down through there that doesn't have hackberry trees on it. We've had a, uh, we've had a concern with this project from the get-go. Uh, I think, uh, Walter, just to be very frank, doesn't like the builder. He doesn't like me, and I feel like that we're being unjustly, having to do things. I mean, this project right now is almost two hundred thousand dollars over what it was. And all I get is, well, you should have had a builder that was a commercial builder that knew all of this. And, uh, so I think a lot of this is being held over our head, uh, because of Walter's feelings towards us.
Okay. Well, Mr. Harrison, uh, thank you for your input. Is there anything specific to your interpretation of our ordinances and your desires to work within those ordinances or ask references from those ordinances that will be helpful for us?
I can only ask that, that common sense come into play. I mean, there's a, there's a, a beautiful tree line who, which I, I've already spent more to, to trim the trees and to get them groomed, just like the ones in the meadows that have already been approved and that'll be at one point. And, uh, I continue to do that. I mean, I'm trying to make this a business in the city of Hasslett where I live. Uh, and it has been a challenge, uh, to the point where I even feel like that maybe I just need to sell that other acre and a third or acre and a half uh, and just, and just go on. I mean, my intention was to try to develop that into an additional sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, uh, after-school project. You know, I mean, that piece of property is good for about anything. Uh, but you know, I, I, I don't know that, I don't know that, that the city wants us here. I don't feel that we wanted.
Mr. Harrison, I appreciate your, you have thoughts and opinions, but I need to understand your perspective about your interpretation of our ordinances and how your application that we're reviewing this evening should be viewed based on your interpretation and your request this evening. Additional commentary isn't, isn't necessary for our interpretation and evaluation.
Okay. Well, I guess I, I'm not, I'm just going to be very honest. I don't guess I'm smart enough to understand exactly what I need to tell you, other than just common sense. Again, I spoke two and a half hours with the mayor and when I left there, uh, he, he just shook his head and said, you know, I, I don't understand what's wrong with these trees. I don't know who made the rule about what trees are acceptable or not. Uh, I mean, obviously I, I wasn't involved in it at that point. But I think what we're trying to do is, is just common sense. You know, I mean, I, I can understand if we can put trees on the, on the north side of my parking lot. The trees where we're going to be planting is also a easement to get to that gas well back there. So I, I mean, I, I'm, I'm, I'm putting trees beside crushed acid or crushed concrete or whatever it is, crushed rock that services that down through there. Uh, I mean, that doesn't even make good sense. That's just like spending money just to appease. I mean, let me put the trees on the north side of, of my parking lot, uh, adjacent to it. I mean, at least let some good become out of it. And that doesn't, I mean, it's not about spending the money or not. It's about just common sense for me. So I understand what trees are on there. I can't change that. But there again, and I certainly wouldn't go in nor with anybody else and right mind would put in a mesquite tree, and that's on the approved list. I mean, again, I'm just looking for common sense here. That's all I'm asking. Is there somebody to look at it with a, a, an open mind and say, you know what? Those trees out on the front are mature trees that have made it many, 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 many years. And just because they don't meet someone's idea of what they want as trees, the trees that I'm going to plant, I mean, they're going to be, I mean, they're going to be from, from your list. I just don't think that we should have to get rid of the other trees or they're no, of no value uh, at this point. So I guess all I'm asking for is just a little bit of common sense.
Thank you. So at this time, we'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak for or against? Okay, recognizing that no one spoke up, we'll close the public hearing and we'll open it up for discussion. So at this time, Planning and Zoning Commission members, you may ask the city staff or the applicant questions regarding the, the application that's before us this evening.
This is Peter Hall. Mr. Harrison, you, uh, you see the four recommendations that are made. Just so I can be clear on which are the ones you're feeling most strongly about as far as implementing those changes or not, could we kind of go through those one at a time? So do you have the agenda or, or Diana, could you put the agenda up? I'm sorry, not the agenda, the recommendations.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so the, the first one is regarding the twelve crepe myrtles instead of this, uh, the seven trees. And that is along the southern property line, right? So that, it, that's adjacent to the houses in the meadow, right?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
So what, is there, is there an objection to the recommendation there during the twelve crepe myrtles instead of seven?
I just think that there's way more than what should be there, but I mean, if, if push comes to shove, no, sir, I, I can, I'll put twelve in there.
Okay, so, so there'd be twelve crepe myrtles and then there would also be the eight-foot fence, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so then the second one is that there's six canopy trees. And it sounds like this is one of the one, correct me if I'm wrong, that you feel most passionate about that you don't want to remove some trees and then re-add ones from the list?
That is correct. Yes, sir. There are already twice as many trees. There's thirty-three of them across there versus the amount of trees that were on the original plan uh, that were, you know, on the approved list. And most, some of them are, there's one, uh, drawing in there. I, I bought a tree caliper so that I could measure trees uh, to let you know or let someone know how big they are. And the trees that I would plant, I mean, these, if you look and, and I sent some facts in there. I mean, these trees are resilient. They are, they, they resist drought. I mean, obviously, you know, there's been no sprinkler system down through there, nor anywhere else along one fifty-six. Uh, I mean, they're, they're survivors.
Okay. So number three is that there's nine canopy trees along the northern property line. What, and what, what was your feeling with that recommendation?
Well, again, the, the trees that are through there are even larger than the ones that are, uh, adjacent to one fifty-six. There is a, a gravel road. I'm just going to be lame in terms. It's a gravel road that uh, feeds that, uh, behind the meadows, those gas wells. It serves of no purpose to anyone with those trees being planted there. I mean, it, the, the trees that are there are massive that are on the property line. And again, I've spoken with the property owner, Bernard LaFang, and he has no intentions whatsoever of removing those trees. And again, I, I'm going to tell you that most of those trees we probably share, even giving the, the, you know, the, where the property line actually is. Uh, so again, I, I don't, I mean, we're not gaining anything there other than just putting some trees over there that are going to, again, just serve no purpose because it's a gravel road that goes down through there.
Okay, and just to be clear, I'm, I'm looking at these maps correctly. All those, all those existing trees are on the north side of that crushed gravel road. There's currently no shielding from your property to the gravel road on that north end, right?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. That is correct. I, and I spoke with again the home, the, uh, the property owner and, uh, since we've, uh, sent this in, I've actually cleaned that up through there. And I have spoken with him about, uh, trimming those trees up as well. I mean, I certainly don't like the way they look, but until we figured what we were going to do out, there was no sense of spending money, uh, if they were going to be taken down.
You know, I've got a couple of follow-up questions on
Sure.
What you discovered. So the trees along the northern lines, you, you talk about the property owner and the trees along the northern line. So a while ago, I thought you claimed ownership of those trees and that, that you should count towards your credit of trees, but now you're saying that somebody else owns those trees and you're talking with them about turning them up or?
Yeah, let me, let me clarify that. Uh, the property line as it is, where the fence is, the fence is about five inches inside the property line, according to the surveyors. And there are a lot of, uh, those trees that are basically split between the, the fence. In other words, it, uh, I'm not sure what, when that fence was put up many, many, many years ago and the trees were certainly smaller. And now the fence has basically, uh, decided which side of the tree that it was on. And that doesn't necessarily mean that that's the property line. So when I was talking to the, the landowner next door, uh, you know, my deal was is do you mind whether they're on your property or my property or half on yours or half on mine if we trim them up? That was the, that was the pretense for that. So if I led you to believe that, again, I, I can't draw a straight line down through there. Uh, I, I just, I can't see it through there, to be honest with you. But according to where the property line marker is in the front and in the rear, as the eye can see, uh, it appears that they're right on the line and some are, because of the size of them, may be encroaching onto his side. So I, I don't know the answer to that.
Okay. And what are the species of trees along that north side?
Uh, the majority of them are the same, uh, the hackberry trees. Again, some of them are as big as twenty-four inches.
Is that one picture that we saw earlier with the very sparse canopy on it? Is that one of the trees on the north property?
Uh, I'll have to let you show me the picture, sir.
It's in the material that, keep going if you would please, Diana.
That, that is the side that we're, we're discussing. Yes.
Yeah, no, keep, keep going. That's not the tree that I'm more concerned about.
Okay.
It, keep. And keep going if you would. And continue.
As you can see, stop for just a moment if you would. If you see, see where the fence is right there. It's behind that large tree. And then see where this one is. It actually is, you can see the post being bent over. So it's, again, I'm not trying to split hairs over any, you know, I mean, they're just huge trees. And, and again, I think you'll see a lot of them, uh, where the barbed wire is. And that's what the front looked like before I cleaned it up. I'm sure y'all saw that many years ago. As you can see right there, you see where the barbed wire was?
Yeah, I'm not worried about the fence.
Okay.
There was a, there was a picture of a, a very mature old growth tree that had a very sparse canopy on it.
Uh, it's, I don't know where all the pictures are, but it's toward the, uh, western edge. I don't think I know which one you were speaking of. That one, right there.
No, this, that, no, this was, this was like you were standing under the tree, pointed the camera straight up and looking at the top of the canopy of the tree. There was nothing but sticks up there. So I, I don't know where it was in the, in the order of all the pictures that you received, Diana. So what's the distance between the gravel road and the fence?
Uh, you know, I didn't take a measurement of that, but I can tell you that the gravel road was put in and it actually encroaches well into, uh, to the southern, in other words, when it comes in, it, it doesn't follow the line. It's, it's basically made to go around all those trees that are overhanging. And, uh, it's been encroaching on it for, I'm sure, some time. And they just keep putting gravel further south so that the trucks don't run into the trees. I don't know the answer. It's not more than probably fifteen feet, I would think.
So fifteen feet between the road and the, the fence line?
If that. A- as you can see how that, uh, see how that road is, uh, it, it, it kind of does that with the gravel instead of just going straight. Um, and again, it's because the trees have gotten so big and uh, laid over, you know, the branches and stuff that you, they can't get to it without running into them. So they just encroached out more.
Okay, so Mr. Reeves, so a, a typical landscape buffer requiring, uh, ornamental trees, what would the typical landscape, landscape buffer with, need to be in order to support trees?
Mr. Chairman, if you're looking at the staff report, page twenty-eight to seventy-eight.
Okay, thank you.
Second paragraph, beginning with when. And that isn't the page. Next page, the next page. There you go. In the middle of the page, it's, in the middle of that paragraph, it says, if a landscape plan were being approved today, the landscape requirement for the subject property along the two hundred and fifty-four point seven-two feet of the N C's owned adjacent property would be, according to section five point two point four C five B, one ornamental tree and one five-gallon shrub will be planted every fifteen linear feet in a five-foot landscaping strip. These trees may be clustered in lieu of placing them every fifteen feet. Total landscaping requirement, required along the two hundred and fifty-four point seven-two feet would be seventeen ornamental trees and seventeen shrubs. One canopy tree would be required along the remaining forty-one point five-six feet.
All right, thank you. That's helpful because, uh, what I was trying to understand was just, would he have to clear out all? All right. Thank you. That's helpful because, uh, what I was trying to understand was just would he have to clear out all the existing trees in order to make room for what is required for his project and?
No. That seems to be a misconception that I've heard from others on this. The applicant doesn't have to remove any of these, any of the existing landscaping. Um, I've been doing development reviews since 1989. And under no set of ordinances that I ever reviewed as development, on, on no project that I ever reviewed at development, if I ever told an applicant that they had to remove existing trees on a property. So, no. If it's on the property, it doesn't have to be removed. If it's not a tree that's on the approved plant list, it can't be counted towards the required landscaping. Unless of course you all recommend that and the city council approves it. Otherwise you're required to install landscaping as per the city's adopted ordinances. And that's what the current approved plan reflects.
And I, uh, Mr. Reeves, I appreciate you saying that because Mr. Harrison, you, you spoke as if those trees along with FM 156 had to be removed and that was going to be, it was going to diminish in some way. The, uh, the quality of life of the residents because of the sound buffer or whatever else, but at no point has anybody stated that those trees have to come out.
I, I'm not arguing that point, sir. What I said was, is that if we put trees, we're going to be planting trees under trees, under the canopy of the other trees. Which again, I, from a common sense standpoint to me, why, why are we doing it? Are required to do that other than the fact that it's not an approved tree? So we're going to have to come back out of the canopy of the tree in order to plant an approved tree. And if that were the case, it would make more sense just to get rid of all the trees and just plant the, the required number of trees, which is less than half. And it would take away and just get rid of all of those trees. I didn't say that, that Walter, anybody said I had to. I said it would make no sense to leave those trees. If I'm going to have to plant trees underneath the canopy. Let me ask this question and, and maybe, maybe I, maybe this is a dumb question. If I've got to put trees on the north side against a gravel road that is going to benefit no one, may I put the trees at least up against the northern part of my parking lot? So at least I'll get some kind of benefit out of them?
Well, if, based on how the city responded, it says the trees and shrubs may be clustered.
Oh, well, I guess maybe, let me restate it. In other words, instead of going all the way to that street or that gravel road to plant some trees, which are going to, going to benefit no one, why can't I put them, I'm, I'm pointing at my computer, you can't see it, uh, right adjacent to my parking lot? So that if, I mean, if it's a matter of planting trees, right where your mouse was down there, adjacent to the parking lot, right there. I mean, let me put, uh, let me put nine trees across there. At least they'll be, someone will get the use out of them. But to put them underneath the canopy of the other trees, again, makes no common sense other than to satisfy the fact that these are approved trees.
Mr. Chairman, let me answer this. Uh, I was actually expecting that proposal to come from the applicant with the original approval of the landscaping plan, but it never did. I certainly have no problem with relocating that tree, the required plantings along the northern property line to a location further into the property for precisely the reasons that he's outlined. But nobody raised that question. He didn't object. His landscape architect didn't object. Nobody said anything about it. It was like, okay, well, I guess you're okay with planting those trees along there. So, you know, I'm perfectly willing to entertain that option. Um, I've never had any objection to that, but nobody raised the question.
So let me ask you this. A, a, I'm not trying to put words in your mouth. If, if that is acceptable and the trees on the other side can just be left as they are, I guess my point is, is it just to satisfy the fact that I need to plant some trees? Or what is my, I guess, if, if they don't have to be over there, like what the original plan said, are we doing it just to go through the motions of planting trees?
No. The city of Hazlet has specific, specific requirements on required landscaping for new construction. The code also allows for alternatives to that. But I can't. There's nothing I can do if nobody, nobody raises the question.
Well, I guess, I guess that's part of my concern.
You have to put trees somewhere.
All right, let me ask this, Walt. Let me ask this question. Will you allow me to put those trees right there in lieu of putting them over there by the road? Will you recommend that?
You're talking about the trees on the northern property line, right?
Yes, sir.
Absolutely. I have no objection to that.
All right. Having said that, let me ask this question.
Fair alternative.
All right, let me ask this question. Are the trees on the northwest of that side, since there is no building up there, are those required?
Yes, they are.
And why is that?
Because the whole site, which is this lot, is the requirement for the landscaping.
Okay.
Now you may have plans to subdivide the lot and sell off the northern part of it. But unless or until that happens, this is the landscape requirement on the property.
Okay.
And, and Mr. Harrison, there's, there's a lot of good reasons for, for doing these landscape shielding. Um, you know, a lot, depending on what does go in there, there, you, you may not want to be looking at a parking lot, that kind of thing. So, so there's definitely reasons for it.
And, and so we, so we all arrive at the same understanding of what is being requested by Mr. Harrison. Mr. Reeves, how would you feel we should best articulate where these, this tree line on, that is going to be located, that was going to be along the northern property boundary? Now is going to be moved to the interior closer to the parking area? So that we all arrive at the same understanding. So when trees get stuck in the ground, we're not like, well, that's not what we thought was going to happen. I mean, we don't have a, we don't have an architect's drawing to show that, that we can say, yes, I approve that.
That's pretty easy. Uh, condition three needs to be modified to say that nine canopy trees from the city's plant list be installed along the northern border of the parking lot.
I would, I would love, I, as some type of a, I, I agree with that. I would love to do that. The only thing that I would ask, if you will allow me to do that and allow me not to have to plant four trees out there in the front on 156, uh, I would just be in agreeance and let's, let's go on down the road.
Well, I can say that. Who? Um, this is Walt again. Uh, yes, it's six tree, six trees short on the FM 156 frontage. Uh, I would certainly entertain a proposal that relocates those trees somewhere else. In lieu. That's fine. I'm all for it.
Uh, I just don't.
So make sure I understand this, Mr. Reeves. So there are along 156, there are six trees required that to be placed.
Right.
And what, and what you're suggesting is that you, you would, if those trees, six trees were placed somewhere else on the property, that would meet his planting requirement. He would not have to disrupt the existing trees along 156.
Well, just so that we all understand how the process works here. It doesn't technically meet the code. But the way the site plan approval process works is that you can approve something that doesn't meet, necessarily meet the code. As long as what's being done can be shown to be a acceptable alternative to what meets the code. And in this case, relocating those six trees elsewhere on the property, in my opinion, certainly does that. You know, I, I fully appreciate the tree line along the FM 156 frontage. And like I said in my presentation, I think Mr. Harrison has done a great job cleaning those trees up. But that, that's in addition to the required landscaping. It's, as far as the code is concerned, that doesn't meet the entire, the required landscaping until or unless the planning and zoning commission recommends approval of that and the P and, and the city council approves that. So my job is to, when there's a willingness to do alter, alternative things, I'm certainly willing to work with an applicant. And now Mr. Harrison is, is willing to work on it. So I'm willing to work on it. Find a place where there's trees, I'm good to go.
So, so along the southern property boundary, there was a replacement of trees for crepe myrtles. Is there some opportunity maybe along 156 to place a, a row of crepe myrtles behind those hackberry trees that would add some color and that would somehow complement what's already there and, and meet the requirement?
You certainly can. But the code is pretty specific that uh, substitution of ornamental or understory trees or canopy trees is at a three to one ratio. So you got six trees. That's 18 ornamental or understory trees. And it, the code doesn't, doesn't specify that there's some maximum amount of those trees. But I wouldn't recommend that they all be the same kind of tree. You know, say six of them are, that no more than sticks or, you know, different types of ornamental trees can be substituted for the, for the required 18, what would be 18 ornamental trees for the six canopy trees. The ornamental trees can't be more than six of any one type. So that you get some diversity in the, in the understory plantings. They're not all the same. But that's up to you. That would be my recommendation on it, but you don't have to follow my recommendation. You can.
What if, what if he moved three of them and left, and, and then, and then left, and I'm just, Mr. Harrison, just bear with me for just a second. Well, I ask a question. It's more of a question. What if he moved three of them and, and then made them part of the nine that he was moving along his nor, northern property or, or northern parking boundary? And then met the three for three to one ratio for under canopy shrubs, which would require him to put nine crepe myrtles or something like that in, in amongst those hackberries along 156. Is that, is that what you're saying he could do if he were to consider that?
But let me just make sure I'm understanding what you're asking here. There's it, the FM 156 frontage is six trees short. So you're saying to make three of those trees part of the nine that would be along the northern property line, which would be moved to north of the, north of the parking lot. Are you saying that it would be nine plus three or just nine?
Nine plus three along the parking. And then he would, and then he would be required to, the other three that were, were required along 156, could, could he withhold putting those trees in and put nine additional ornamental shrubs in and amongst those hackberries and meet the requirement?
Yeah. Um, just so that everybody's on the same page here. The three required canopy trees don't have to be in the existing tree line. They could be behind it. There's plenty of room there to put a tree in behind the existing tree line. They're not in the, they're not in the canopy. They're behind it.
So you understand what your options are, Mr. Harrison? You, you, you've got 15 trees you need to, you need to put on the property. If you choose not to put the tree, you got a three to one ratio for every tree you don't put in, that you got to put a different type of ornamental bush in. Is that Mr., is that correct, Mr. Reeves?
Uh, 15 is correct. Not, not including the four on the southern property line. But those can be substituted as a three to one ratio with ornamental trees. So yes, what, what you are talking about, Mr. Chairman, three canopy trees behind the existing tree line along the FM 156 frontage with, uh, what was it, would be nine understory trees, ornamental trees, either worked into the existing tree line or somewhere along there. Yeah, as far as I'm concerned, that's an imaginative way to get there.
And then, Mr. Harrison, actually that helps some of your property boundary, uh, neighbors who appreciated the under, you know, the lower growth. So, uh, you know, I'm just trying to find options here.
And I, and I appreciate that very much. Uh, I guess what it boils down to is regardless of the trees that are out there, uh, those trees don't count for anything. It's only the trees. There are only four of them out there. So that's why, again, we're having the difference. So the other, the trees that are out there, whether they, they stay or they go, they mean nothing as far as in the count.
And that's. Based on our ordinances, based on our ordinances, that is a correct interpretation. The hackberry trees don't count. It doesn't mean they have to go, but they don't count towards your requirement.
Well, I guess that's what I'm asking. I'm asking them to make a variance to where they do count. Uh, so that, again, that, that's my, that is what I'm asking.
Yeah. And you, you mentioned the meadows, you know, many times and, you know, nobody ever told the meadows they had to take trees out. So, you know, they were pretty, you're pretty much the same situation as you, you are in, you know, trees weren't going to come out of the ground just because they were there and they didn't meet the requirement. But they still had to meet their landscaping requirements the same way you do.
Well, um, without seeming argument, there aren't enough trees down through there, not including those that are already there. And that's where my, my point is, is in order, in other words, those trees that are approved, there's not enough of those going down through the front of that without the hackberry trees. At this point, I feel like I'm wasting y'all's time. Uh, I mean, I, I'm asking, I'm asking for a variance on that and it is, it sounds, uh, that's not going to happen. Um, you know, I, I mean, I, I, I love the fact that we're trying to move the trees toward the, you know, where they do the most good and, and, you know, whatnot. And I appreciate that. I do appreciate that, Walter, the option. Uh, you know, this isn't, this isn't about the money. It's just about common sense for me and, and, you know, and I, I'm just as easy just to, you know, I, I'm just frustrated right now because common sense makes no, has no bearing on this whatsoever.
So I have a, I have a quick question. Right now, the number of trees along 156, if we're not talking about from the list, the number of trees exceeds what's required. Is that true?
About twice. There's 33 trees. And I think the number is what, uh, correct me, Walter, is it 13? 12? There's, I mean, it's, it is.
10.
Not even close.
The required number of canopy trees is 10 on the FM 156 frontage.
I'm three times that, sir. I'm 33 trees. And that doesn't include the ones that are doubled up or clustered. That's just, I, I'm just counting those as one. And I think that's where my frustration is. I'm not. And I think that's where my frustration is. I'm not sure if it's Mr. Hall. My frustration is, is that I'm planting trees under a tree just to, just to have a number. And that, that number of trees has already tripled the amount of trees there are required.
And and I understand that's, that's why I'm asking the question.
Yes, sir.
And I'm not an arborist, and, you know, none of, none of the people on the planning and zoning commission are charged with being an arborist to justify what trees are permissible and which ones aren't. But our ordinances are developed by people who have the experience to determine what trees will, you know, maintain the right look over the longevity of the life of the tree. And so that's why there is an approved plant list.
Yes, sir.
For the preservation and the aesthetics and, you know, the well-being of the community.
And I think those trees, as they are, provide that.
Uh, this is Paul Wallach, Mr. Chairman. Can I say something a minute?
Absolutely, you can.
Okay. As far as I can tell and and know, all of those hackberry trees are in the text dot right away. And nobody has mentioned yet about Texton's plans to widen one fifty six. Maybe five years from now, don't know, but sooner or later, those hackberry trees are going to go. My, that's my guess. They're going to go. When they start widening one fifty six. Um, I've done a lot of road projects in my career, and saving trees is extremely difficult. Saving hackberry trees won't happen. So all of this discussion about those existing trees, that's fine, but someday when they're gone, you still want the shield good, you know, good specimen trees on the inside of his property. I think they need to be there, and I I don't think we ought to, I think that the hackberry trees are good for now. I just don't think they're good for the long run. They're going to be gone.
So any, any, any other questions to the applicant or city staff?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion if that, if everybody will grant me the opportunity to do that. This is Greg Maddish. I'm going to make a motion. I believe we recommend approval of the amended landscape plan for Hazlet Elite Learning Center, subject to the following conditions. One, that twelve crepe myrtles instead of the proposed seven be installed along the southern property in lieu of the four canopy trees being removed by installation of the board fence. Two, that six canopy trees from the city's plant list be installed along FM one fifty six. Or those six canopy trees be relocated to another permissible location within the property. Or they be substituted as permitted by our ordinances with ornamental shrubs with a ratio of one to three. Three, that the nine canopy trees from the city's plant list be installed either along the northern property line or along the concrete parking area on the northern side of the facility. And four, that the requirement of section five dot two dot two dot C dot one that the landscape plan be prepared by registered landscape architect be waived. Walt, any fault in what I said?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, this is Walt. Uh, no, you did well.
Thank you. Is there a second?
This is Peter Hall. A second.
There's a motion. It's been seconded by Mr. Hall. We'll do a roll call of votes. Peter.
Aye.
Jim. Jim. Dennis.
Aye.
Brian.
As amended, aye.
Paul. Paul, are you there?
I, yeah, I'm here. I'm still contemplating along one fifty six, but um, I'll go along with it. Yes.
And Jim. I have not heard a reply from Jim, and this is Greg, and I'm aye. So the motion passes. One, no, one did not vote, and that was Jim. Hey, thank you, sir.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, just for the record, I would note that it wasn't that, it may very well be that Commissioner Martenson couldn't Markinson couldn't, couldn't actually make the vote happen for technological reasons. I I would, I would not say that, you know, leave it to be that he didn't vote, just that as a
We're not able to capture his vote.
Wasn't able to capture his vote. There you go. Good, good wording.
Okay, thank you for the, uh, the recommendation on that. Okay, agenda item five, executive session. We do not need that this evening. Six, this consider actions during the executive session, which we also do not need. Number seven, status of current development projects. There is an exhibit inside of our material that was provided for the meeting this evening. Are there any questions for anybody on the city staff regarding any of the existing projects? Hey, no questions for city staff on existing projects. So agenda item eight.
I have one item right now for the June meeting. Given the whole discussion on this, it's not a hard thing to do, to develop an ordinance to make hackberries part of the approval plant list if that's what you want to do. So that's a thought out there for you to consider. Maybe you don't want to consider it. But I throw it out there. You don't have to do anything tonight on that. But
Can we have it as a work, can we have as a workshop discussion?
Certainly can.
All right, could we add, could we include that with June's meeting?
Not a problem.
All right. If we could add that. Is there anything else similar to that that we need, need to, uh, have some discussion around?
Hi, Chairman. This is Travis Otzenazio, the city engineer. Um, if we're going, if you want to have a discussion on trees, I would invite the public works director who has over thirty years' experience dealing with trees in the city and can probably add to the discussion in a meaningful way.
Thank you. Great recommendation.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Okay. Moving on, agenda item number nine, review meeting project schedules, uh, meeting dates. So our next meeting is Monday, June twenty ninth at six thirty PM. Anybody know at this time whether or not they would not be able to attend? And have they made any projections of when we'll be meeting in person again at this point, Diana?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I believe it would not be during the month of June, so we would still have a pillow conference in June.
Okay. Very good. And with that, we will adjourn. The time is eight oh eight PM. Thank you, everybody, for your participation this evening.
Yeah, thank you, everybody. Have a good evening. Stay safe. Stay healthy.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Thank you all.